Now what are you throwing at us? This is for Louis.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Big Guy.
Thanks, sir.
It's gonna be like awesome.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Good to see you. You too.
Hey, Joe. I missed it the hourly.
I thought it had to be more than that.
Justin really is a deal.
Don't tell him that.
We pay you? Soybeans.
And now call the Norton City Committee Work Session Order Monday, May 21, 2018. Time is 7:02 PM. Would you please rise for Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Karaman?
Here.
Mr. Towsley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Mr. Pilat?
Here.
First item on tonight's agenda is the T-21 presentation. I will turn this over to Mr. Kram.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight with us making a presentation will be our Health Commissioner of Summit County, Donna Skoda, and with her also is Corey Kendrick. And forgive me for forgetting your title, but I'm sure that we'll get to that. If you would go ahead and take the podium and state your name.
Thank you. My name is Donna Skoda, S-K-O-D-A. I am the Health Commissioner for Summit County, and I thank you greatly for letting us come here this evening and talk to you about the issue of tobacco in our community. I'm gonna start out briefly and talk a little bit about public health policy, and then Corey will get into the T-21 presentation. First of all, as you know, and each of you should have a handout to refer to, if you look on that first page, there's a triangular shaped item that looks at the health pyramid. This is a tool that CDC has used for many, many years to influence public health and lawmakers to try to really look at the health impact. How much bang for your buck are you getting? And we know that individual, it's important to have education for individuals, but you get much more if you change policy and if you make it more difficult and if you make the default choice the easier choice. So if you turn the page, when we look at over the century, public health policy interventions have been good and far-reaching. There's the vaccine issue, there's helmets, we require children to wear bike helmets, and some states have mandatory motorcycle helmets. We've also done seat belts. And what this is, is it's a way to protect the general public. Not everybody likes it, but it does really save lives and help keep costs down for the public spend. We know that tobacco kills more folks than alcohol, AIDS, car crashes, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined. We know that adults in Ohio, every year we have about 20,000 folks that die in Ohio from tobacco-related illnesses. Kids under 18 that are alive right now in Ohio, we expect about 259,000 of those children to go on and die from a tobacco-related off, um, alcohol, excuse me, tobacco habit. For every person who dies right now in Ohio, there is, 30 people live with a serious smoking-related illness, and that's about 1 in 5 folks who are now living with a tobacco-related illness. And if we look at the economic impact of tobacco, it costs each one of us, now keep in mind only about 20% of all individuals smoke, but it costs every single one of us in Summit County and around the country about $1,000 out of our household income in higher premiums, paying taxes, in order to support that illness. If you remember and think back to Smoke Free Ohio in 2006, it was initially met with a lot of opposition, but now it's difficult to imagine going to a restaurant or anywhere and being exposed to secondhand smoke. And I can tell you, in my lifetime, I know I have seen the greatest impact we will have on health is by creating Smoke Free Ohio. We at the Health Department do all of the follow-up calls for the state of Ohio for violators, and I can tell you, it's just become like part of life. We get very few complaints from individuals now that are actually violating that smoking rule, indoor smoking. So I just wanted to talk a minute about why we do these things, and Corey Kendrick is gonna present to you now the T-21, kind of the meat to the program.
Good evening. My name's Corey Kendrick. I'm the Director of Population Health for Summit County Public Health. I'm just gonna talk a little bit specifically about Tobacco 21. And so this is a program that's been going on for some time now. It's currently in 300-plus cities in 19 different states, and currently five states have went Tobacco 21, so the whole state, you currently have to be 21-years of age to buy tobacco. In Ohio, Columbus, Cleveland, and recently Akron have all passed Tobacco 21 policies, and then some smaller communities around the Columbus area have also passed. So Akron was the 10th city to pass Tobacco 21. So we have some broad support here locally in Summit County. We have some local coalitions. The Township Association has written a letter of support, and all three hospital systems have came out and testified and written letters of support in support of Tobacco 21. There is really, I mean, it doesn't get talked about a lot, but there is no greater issue that we can combat without, with, besides tobacco. I mean, it's one of the easiest preventable, premature death, things you can do to, uh, yeah, to prevent. As well as the American Heart Association, Lung Association, Cancer Society, Coalition for Tobacco-Free Kids, and countless others who have brought on support for Tobacco 21. This is also evidence-based. 21 is just not a magic number. It might seem like, well, everything else is going 21, why, why 21? Well, there's a couple of good reasons for this. It pushes it out of the social circle of high school kids. And what, the aim of what this is really looking to do is get tobacco and recently vaping products, which I'll talk about in a minute, out of the reach of 8th graders to seniors, because that's the biggest issue. And if you don't start smoking by the age of 21, you're 95% less likely to do so. So really, 2% of smokers create 90% of lifelong smokers. This is evidence-based, so by pushing that social circle out and making it harder for teens to know someone who might be 21-years of age or older, which is less likely than knowing an 18-year-old, which is likely a senior in their school, it's harder than, harder for them to get tobacco. And we know from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey that we do, that the two main ways that teens get tobacco are, one, from a peer, and two, from a retail establishment they're able to buy it at. So another component of this, which I'll talk to in a minute, is enforcement, doing stronger enforcement with the retailers. Electronic tobacco vaping, this has become huge. We've definitely seen a downward trend in tobacco use, which is great. Ohio is still one of the worst tobacco states in the United States. We rank like 48th to 49th from the Health Policy Institute of Ohio on some of our tobacco rankings, but it's definitely declined. But vaping, however, is, went up, and you can see from the electronic tobacco vaping slide that 36% of students have tried vaping as opposed to 27% have tried traditional cigarettes. This is concerning because these new jewels, I don't know if you guys have seen these in the newspaper, are starting to come out, and they're becoming increasingly popular. It's become almost a social media meme to be jeweling in school. And I've talked to some local high schools, and I've heard some concerned parents stating their kids are really having an issue with these jewel devices in the classroom. It's about the size of a USB device. They actually plug into a USB port, charge, and they have electronic, their electronic cigarette that contains nicotine. And what we're starting to find out about electronic cigarettes, they're brand-new, I mean, they've only been on the scene since about 2010, so we don't have a lot of data on them, but they're starting to do more research. The American Pediatric Association has done some research on this, and they found that there is multiple cancer-causing ingredients in e-cigarettes. Five cancer-causing ingredients, and the highest level of cancer-causing ingredients come from the fruit flavors, which are most popular with high school kids. And these come in thousands of fruit flavors, from grape to apple, banana, to all sorts of, you know, extravagant flavors that people can choose from, so they're very attractive to young kids. Another study that was done by the American Pediatric publication is that e-cigarettes are a one-way street to traditional tobacco use. So students who try a vaping device are seven times more likely to go to traditional cigarettes the following year. And the tobacco industry knows this. Tobacco industry has kind of conceded traditional tobacco, and they're starting to really ramp up their marketing and move towards e-cigarettes because they know they'll still get the net gain. The e-cigarette advertising has increased $110 million per year. One of the biggest questions I get from this is the military aspect. And so what's interesting, the military has made a shift in the recent years, and I know, you know, talking to other council members, that, you know, cigarettes used to be provided in the, you know, to soldiers by the military, so it's interesting, they're not flipping their, their stance on this, but, you know, knowing the data we know now about tobacco, the military is very interested in having a tobacco-free military. Where this first passed in Hawaii statewide, the base also complied with a 21 and over, they didn't have to, they chose to, and each branch of the military has launched a tobacco cessation program and campaigned to try to get soldiers to quit smoking, and they're very supportive of any method to do so. So as I mentioned before, just 2% of tobacco sales help produce 90% of new smokers. And if people don't start by the age of 21, they're 95% less likely. And we know that cessation is an option, but if you remember that health impact pyramid Donna talked about, that's at the very top of that pyramid. Cessation affects one person at a time, there's a 90% failure rate, it takes an average of three attempts, so it's very costly to do so. So if we can stop teens from ever starting by the age of 21, they're very less likely to ever start. So I'll talk just briefly about enforcement and the other issue. So we know that teens get the cigarettes from either their friends or older peers or from retail establishments they get sold to. Currently, there's not great enforcement for tobacco, really across the country. It's not enforced the same way as really anything else, even alcohol. And so we know for the few enforcements that were done in Summit County, we had about a 50% failure rate, and only about 25 locations were checked. So a piece of Tobacco 21 is also increasing enforcement and going to the, inspecting the tobacco retailers every year to ensure that they are not selling to minors. So the three, the three components of this, the implementation, so what has to happen for this to work? The Health Department, the model that's been most successful is that the Health Department would do the enforcement, compliance, and inspections of these retailers. And so this means there's no cost to the city. The retailers pay about a $150 fee one time, and they don't have to pay anything else unless they fall out of compliance, and that means they would be selling cigarettes to a minor. If they would, if they would be caught selling cigarettes to a minor, there's a warning, a $500 fine the second time, and the third time, a $1,000 fine, and a $1,000 subsequent fine thereafter. This has to be done through a ordinance, through the city, to empower the Health Department to enable us to do the enforcement. It also has to be passed to raise the minimum buying age of 21. So those are the two components of the Tobacco 21. So with that, I gave you a lot of information. I know you guys have lots of questions, so, or may not have any questions, I don't know.
I do have a question. You were talking about the fines there. Are those fines levied against the establishment or against the employee that sold them?
That's a great question. They're actually against the establishment, so there is, there is no criminal component to this whatsoever. It's a civil fine, and the civil fine is levied against the establishment, so the clerk selling, it's not levied against him or her.
And then I saw in here somewhere talked about how many violations there were selling to underage. There was 25 in Summit County out of the 460 retailers.
Yeah, there's, there's really not a whole lot of funding that we get to do that, so right now the state gives us a very small grant amount for very specific areas to do enforcement, and currently we have to contract with local police departments to do so. So very, very few retail establishments are ever checked for compliance, and that's really why we have such a high sell rate. And on top of that, I mean, the difference between a 17-year-old, 18-year-old, or a 16-year-old, 18-year-old, it's, it's not as easily distinguishable between that and a 21-year-old. So there's just not a great enforcement rate, and we know there's less than 50% compliance.
How do you feel that would affect, if this were to go into effect? How, how do you feel that, that would impact the enforcement of it at that point in time?
Well, again, we try, we'll try to launch an education campaign with all the retailers. The goal is to bring everyone in compliance. We wouldn't want to penalize anyone, but we also don't want them selling to minors. So we're gonna launch an education campaign to the retailers, provide them education, cessation information for those 18- and 20-year-olds that would be affected, and then also provide some signage and stickers to, and education that they can give their employees to make sure they're not selling to anyone under the age of 21. It may not have an immediate impact, but very shortly, over time, it's been proven. So the one thing I forgot to mention, where this is evidence-based, the first, one of the first areas to implement this, Anita, Massachusetts, passed this, and they did a Youth Risk Behavior Survey the next three years following. And what was interesting, they passed it, but the surrounding areas did not. And so they had a 50% reduction in youth initiation rate in tobacco, so it cut their teen smoking rates in half over the next three years, while the surrounding towns who didn't pass it, didn't. And theirs didn't drop at all. So it had a significant impact, so I know one of the, you know, arguments is that, well, they could just go across the street. Well, some people will go across the street or across the town to do so, but it still has a significant impact on that. Now, one of the things we're trying to do, we'd like to be one of the first county-wide areas to implement this, so we've been talking to many towns, that, I guess, the township associations are very interested. I have a second reading tomorrow in another municipality in Summit County, and so various, various people, municipalities are looking at this, so if we can get the majority of Summit County to pass something like this, it can have a huge impact for our youth.
Thank you.
Is, is the, is the county government looking at this at all?
Yes, yes.
Do you know what percentage of the military smoke presently?
I'm, I'm not sure what the percentage is that smoke, but we know there's about 218 to 20-year-olds in the military in northeast Ohio.
How many?
About 200.
In, in the military and, and, in northeast Ohio?
In, in the greater Summit County area. We don't have, we don't have the census data to kind of narrow just Summit County down, but in the greater Summit County area, it's about the best estimate we can get. And we know the smoking rate for that age is about 13%, so not a huge amount.
And there's no, in this present, Tobacco 21, there's no exception to a person who's 18-years-old and in the military?
No, there's not.
I think there should be, but that's okay. So you think there's only 200 people in, in this area that are in the military? Is that right?
Oh, I believe about 1%, 1% of the populations in the military, actually the largest demographic in the military is, is beyond the 21-year-old demographic, so, according to our census data, which is the best we have.
There's a, excuse me if I may. I had done some research on this due to a project my wife has been involved in for the past several years, and a thing called attachment, which I mentioned to you earlier, but it's a, it's a patterning. It's how the brain develops, and I know you have some data on that you alluded to, but it has to do with the maturation of the brain and making certain choices, whereas we all assume that everybody's an adult at 18. But do they really process fully as an adult at the age of 18? And how many things did we all do when we were 18 that we wish by the time we were 24, 26, that we maybe shouldn't have done or wouldn't have done? And the truth is, out of Duke University, they've done a study on this, so this is evidence-based, that the human brain really does not mature enough to make adult decisions by, until about the age of 24 to 26 years of age. So if we're saying because you can carry a gun and go dodge bullets, that you should be able to smoke, let's think about that. Who are we trying, what are we trying to do? We're trying to save lives by not letting them have free access to cigarettes and smoking apparatus and getting started when their influences at an early age were not positive influences, and that's a lot of our youth that are growing into young adulthood. So being able to make those wise decisions hasn't necessarily gone along with chronological age as we all assumed it had. We had to draw a line somewhere, so we can drive at 16 with training, we can have alcohol at 21, and right now we're trying to move the bar a little bit higher on the smoking because this is designed to prevent disease, prevent things later in life, and if you don't start by the age of 21, you're much less apt to start later in life. 21, you make, you make that decision, but I think it's a wise decision to endorse the T-21. The other is the impact from California, now that we have some data from other states that passed this, and they're finding that in the 15- and 16-year-olds, that their smoking rate has vastly decreased. So the data from 2009, which we're analyzing now, nine years later, it takes the government a little time to move, as y'all have found out since you're sitting back here, so you know that already. But the data has shown us a huge impact on the 15- and 16-year-olds not having access and not starting smoking at that age, whereas we think we're dealing with 18 through 21, and we're also impacting their relationships with their friends from school and other places. The legislation, I'm sorry, the brain maturation issue, I actually made a copy of this for council, if you'd like to have a copy of that. And the states, since I know that, we mentioned five states, those states so far are California, Hawaii, Oregon, Maine, and Rhode Island. And just as an aside, since I was deep in tobacco company this past, country this past week, I realized we have a culture that goes back deeply in the United States of smoking. That's how our country was funded. Our early settlers didn't have money, and tobacco was what they used as money. That's how they traded with the English or British, as we've come to know them later. And so it's deeply ingrained in our society that smoking is just part of our culture. We need to rethink that. Are we going to endorse the smoking and let them actually have access and continue doing as they're doing, because we know what we're getting by doing it the way we've been doing it? I think it's time to make a change, and I think I would endorse this. So, are there any other questions? I know we've had some civil rights questions up here before, I was just wanting to try to address that, if that was of interest.
And just, just leading on to that with the brain, the Dr. Christopher, Norman Christopher of Children's testified at Akron, and just, it has to do also with the Addiction and Rewards Center and the brain, and so forming those addictions young, even at 18, can change the way your brain develops because it physically is not developed yet. So being exposed to any addictive substance before your, your brain's fully matured can have long-lasting consequences the earlier you start. So even though it's 18, it's still very risky, so just wanted to add that.
I'm sorry, I don't remember a whole lot on it, I just remember hearing there was some, some push trying to make tobacco manufacturers reduce the nicotine level to a, a non-addictive level in cigarettes. You know anything on that?
Um, yeah, that's been going back and forth. I'm not sure if that's gonna go or not. The biggest, the bigger issue in my, in my mind really is not tobacco anymore, it's vaping. We're seeing, again, a huge shift from tobacco products to vaping, especially with our kids, and it's completely unregulated. So that's another big piece what this ordinance would do, it covers any nicotine product, not just tobacco, but vaping products and tobacco paraphernalia. So that's the bigger issue for our kids and our future generations. We don't know, we're not gonna know for 30 years what these vaping products are doing to, to our, our kids and our, our lungs, because we don't have the data. We're just now finding out the carcinogens that are in it, we're finding out that there is widely unregulated nicotine levels, extremely high, and all sorts of other carcinogenic products that are in here. And so we're not gonna know the full scope of this until it's, it's likely too late for, for a whole generation. I just saw in the, in the news the other day, a, a person had been vaping for three weeks and developed wet lung and was admitted to the hospital, and it's a certain condition that can happen, so there's a lot of risks that come with this. It's just not known yet, and we're not gonna know the full consequences for some time, unfortunately.
Obviously, this is something I'm passionate about as a pharmacist, and I believe I'm the only one here on the council that represents medical, but I was on the board of Tri-County Hospice for two years. I did home visits with them occasionally, volunteering, and if you've ever seen someone, you probably know someone who has passed away because of lung cancer or other related illnesses, emphysema, asthma that's been aggravated, deterioration of the lung, the lung tissue changes, and it's a horrible death. If we could prevent one of those, maybe one of your family members, maybe somebody you know, if we could just prevent one, we would have done a good job today.
I've made it pretty clear where I stand, so I'm not gonna elaborate much more on that. Thank you for coming and educating. I think your, your efforts are important. I think education's important. I don't think anybody up here would argue the effects of cigarettes. What this really comes down to for us is what do you think the purpose of government is? It really has nothing to do with all these details, really, when it comes down to government. The details are true. I don't smoke, I would not condone smoking, however, government's there to serve. I've heard several times that the two words used, "We can't let them." That frightens me, that, if I'm just gonna be honest, it infuriates me. I've got relatives who have served through every war this country's ever seen. They served for me to have my freedom. It's my duty to protect that. Again, what you're doing, that's great, I applaud that, but the question for us up here is, are we here to decide what we let people do or not? Or are we here to serve the people? And your opinions are gonna differ from mine, but I would like us to at least focus on that going forward. It's not, at least for me, it's not really about... It's not, at least for me, it's not really about what a 15-year-old gets in school or not, as far as a government viewpoint goes. It's about, am I going to serve the people, or am I going to try to control the people? That's all I have to say.
If I might. We sit up here and tell people what to do all the time.
I do not.
Well, we have speeding laws, so we tell people they can't speed. We have laws that make you buy car insurance, so we tell people that they have to have car insurance. We tell people that they can't drink before the age of 21, so we tell them that they can't do that. We tell 16-year-olds that they're not allowed to vote, so we tell them they can't do that. Yes, we do sit up here and tell people what to do all the time. Now, I, I understand your point of view, Paul, I get it, but it's not like we don't tell people what to do all the time.
Can I respond to that real quickly?
Sure.
You, you have a point, except most of those other things are protecting my rights from you infringing on my rights with your rights. That's the difference. I hope, I, I hope that's understood what I said.
Yes, and, and I would like to protect my rights from paying this extra money that people, that I end up paying, because people exercise their right to smoke. We can protect our rights not to pay that. So there's always a balancing of rights and responsibilities, and there's, there's always a balancing of, of working toward the common good and working toward the health of, of the citizens. So I, I don't see this as just simply a, this is a civil rights issue. There's more to it than that.
Anyone else?
I do, I do.
Yes.
I basically agree with Paul. I mean, this is just another step, and it's an old term, but Big Brother, I don't like him. And the fact of it is, where's it going to stop now? It's, today it's cigarettes, they're already, they're already working at the, looking at the sugar content put into many things, what we eat, drink, yet they don't make healthier food to put out there for people, mandatory, they just want to regulate the people. Also, by your own admission, you can't enforce what we have now. So if we increase the ages, if you're only looking at 25 checks completed out of the 460 retailers?
Well, we don't have the authority to do so right now, so that's, that's one of the issues. We don't have the authority to enforce this. So that's one of the things this ordinance would do, is grant us the, the authority. So the reason why we, we can't is we have to use very limited funds to hire a police officer to do the checks for us. And so this would allow our existing staff to do enforcement, which would allow us to look at all retailers. We'd be able to look at all 460 retailers through a summit county if it was passed countywide.
So your existing staff will be able to pick up going through 460 retailers?
Yes.
With no problem? No hiring, no increase whatsoever?
About one FTE, and that's what some of the funds would pay for, through the licensing or the, the registration fees to the retailers.
To hire people? Or to pay you to go, or to pay the employees you already have to go do it?
It would increase ours, our, about by one FTE, one full-time employee.
Any other comments? Anything else, Dan?
No. There is legislation that has been drafted for county and other places. I'd like us to consider this and to bring it forward as a document. Right now, there's not really reason to make a motion for a document that doesn't exist yet on our, our tables. I don't know if the board, council, would want more time to consider this and to get some feedback from constituents, but I think we've had both sides pretty fairly represented this evening, and it's just getting the word out to the, you know, to the public, realizing that the public doesn't always make the wisest decision. That's why they elected us as council to make decisions, and it's costly for us to bring every single little decision we make to the general populace. I'm more in favor of council doing that work that we were hired to do. So, I, I don't have a general feeling of the, of the group. Perhaps ask your advice on that, Mr. President.
At this time, I don't think that, based off the information provided so far, I don't think there's probably enough support to, to pass it. We could carry it over to the next committee work session, give people opportunity to kind of take in what the Health Department's given us, the information they've given us tonight, weigh it, check with constituents, see what they think, and discuss it further at the next committee, the whole, or committee work session.
Okay.
If, if we're going to talk about it at the next committee work session, are you going to assign it to a committee then?
It'd probably go underneath, I guess.
Planning?
Planning. Safety? Could go under safety.
I think it just needs to be assigned to some committees so that we can work through the committee process.
Yeah.
We'll work with Justin Hildes, we're to put it.
Yeah, we're kind of probably weighing more towards safety, but, Justin, any thought off the top of your head?
I try not to. Safety, if safety were planning, this is probably fine, either one should be okay.
Let's go ahead and put it under safety. Yep.
Would this be a standard piece of legislation that's already drafted by this 21 deal? Or are we writing, or are you writing a piece of legislation for us to consider for Norton only?
Well, I think the intent would be, I think from the Health Department, be introduced a standardized ordinance. I don't know if there were changes made in the other communities that are looking at or adopting it, I can find that out.
We, we have a standard template that we've been providing, and so far, no changes have been made, so.
I could, I could personally support the piece of legislation that had an exemption for military personnel over 18 years old. I will not support any, any piece of legislation, no way, shape, or form, cigarettes, alcohol, shoes, anything that, that deprives any military person of anything. And that's depriving that 18-year-old soldier the right to go overseas and come back. He smoked overseas, he comes back, he's sitting in his own living room, and he can't legally smoke a cigarette. I will not deprive him of that.
I just want to clarify real quick, I know it might be semantics, but he can legally smoke, he just cannot purchase at a retailer. So I, I know it's semantics, but I, I didn't want to be, I didn't want there to be confusion that you can't, you couldn't, there would be criminal to smoke in his own home.
No, I, I understand that.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be, make sure, because I was confused at one point that it was a criminal issue for people to smoke, so.
So it, it would be the same thing as that soldier can sit in his living room, he can't buy beer?
Yes, he can.
No, he can't, if he's 18.
Almost everywhere, a soldier can buy beer at 18.
No, we're talking here, in Ohio.
In Ohio.
I'd, I'd deprive him of that, I wouldn't vote to deprive him of that either.
But I'm just saying, that's, that's the way it is.
Okay, any other?
I was going to say, since I'm in charge of the safety, why don't Justin or, when we name that packet up in two weeks, could you put that copy of that legislation so we can all look at it before the meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you referring to the template of the legislation?
The template of the, yeah, so we get some...
Put, put the existing template into a form and ordinance, use the same.
So they can smoke, but they can't buy it?
Correct.
And so, somebody else could buy it for them, and that'd be okay?
Yes. All right, any other comments?
Again, what we're trying to do is, is the youth, is not really so much for that soldier.
Okay. Well, we thank you for your time and for the presentation, the information.
Appreciate you having us out, and on my cards and all the packets, if you guys have any questions, please give me a call, and again, appreciate your time and, and hearing us out, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next item on tonight's agenda is then and now approval. As you know, anything, any invoice that's dated after the end of the month, or before the actual PO is cut, anything over $3,000 has to come before council for approval. Ron, would you like to explain what happened with this, this 90, $94,056.88?
This is our semi-annual interest payment on our bonds. The invoice comes out of US Bank up in Minnesota. It left up there, it was, it was postmarked, or invoice was actually dated 4/9. I don't know exactly when it was mailed, but by the time I got it and was able to write the purchase order, it was on the 17th, which was later. So it created a then and now.
Can we, are these things that you're looking to set up on, where the invoice is emailed versus mailed, or both? So that way, you get the email instantly, and the mail would follow up?
I could ask the bank, they actually send a hard copy to us.
Might, might prevent it in the future.
In that, from what I've seen over the last couple of years, they've, they've always mailed a hard copy, and that usually gets to us on a timely basis. I don't know where this one went to, but it didn't get to me on a timely basis.
That might prevent it in the future, if they're willing to email it as well as mail a hard copy. All right, any questions on this? And I will move to add this to council's next agenda, and since you're looking to get this paid by the end of the month with emergency, and I'll ask that we waive the second and third, since it's normal payment that we're making, it was just invoice, came in before the PO, so.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pelot?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Next item on tonight's agenda is the invoice from Sowers, Bowie?
Bowie.
And associates. This was for legal services that were provided on the estimates, appraisals for the Acme property, and the total on this was 19, 19 and some change, 19776?
Nine.
779. We asked for a breakdown as far as what was included in those hours, and Mr. Messner was so kind to run to his office and grab it and give it to us here. This was for trial preparation, the assessment for the property, the impact.
I could help with that. So, as the Albrecht property was getting ready to go to trial, which we just recently settled, was scheduled to begin last week, it was deposition, testimony, doing a new appraisal based on new information, evaluating the Albrecht property appraisal, all those things that you would need to do to go to appropriation trial, they were doing those services. So it was the work leading up to that.
Anyone have any questions on this?
I do, I do.
Yes.
Who does, who'd they actually work for? Did they work for Rowettzel, or did they work for the city?
They, they worked for the city. So they were an appraiser that is part of the ODOT package, so as you know, as you get the ODOT money, they have certain appraisers they work with. Roger Sowers Company is one of them, Ms. Bowie works for Roger Sowers Company. And so that was one, we get to select the appraiser, but they were, we're pretty much told it's one of these, you know, qualified appraisers that you can select from. So he, he had performed, Mr. Sowers had performed the original appraisal for the property that was the basis of going into court.
The 186.
The 186 one, correct.
And so then they came back and they reappraised it at 3 or 350?
Right. Based on information that we received from Albrecht about parking lot, things that we didn't know at the time, the appraisal ended up coming back a little bit different, second time.
So did we have any idea what they were going to cost us beforehand?
I mean, it was on an hourly basis, so I don't know if we knew that, but it's, you know, the, the work leading up to trial, it's time-consuming. And there was a lot of, there's a lot of conversations with GPD the engineer, redoing, redoing work, you know, they did a thorough job.
Is, is this, does ODOT have to pay 90% of this?
Correct, ODOT reimburses 90%.
So this 19779, we're not actually paying?
You're advancing it, you pay, you paid upfront, and then 90% reimbursement comes back from ODOT.
Okay. Norton's final cost is $1,977.93. Thank you.
That's good.
Any other questions, comments on this? Hearing none. Do we have any specific timeline that these need paid?
Possible, Mr. President, I'd like to, if, if we could waive second and third reading, I'd like to get it paid by the end of the month if possible. So if we do a first reading next Monday and pass it, I can get it paid yet in the month of May. If that's, if, if council would like to have more readings, then, then they can have more readings.
What we'll do is, I will make a motion at this time to add it to council's next agenda with emergency, and just waiting to see what kind of questions we get back on the detailed sheet here, if any. We can waive the motions that night, but for now, just add it to council's next agenda with emergency. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pelot?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Next item tentative agreement with EMS, Mr. Kousley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recently, the administration has come to a tentative agreement with the EMS. I'm assuming they didn't have a contract in 2017, so this will be retroactive in 17, a 2% raise, a 2% raise this year, and a 2.3% raise in 2019. Is there anything the administration would like to add to that? Mr. Fowler?
The collective bargaining law of the state of Ohio provides that when a contract expires, that when you sign a continuation agreement, that any payment for that year is retroactive. So due to the fact that this contract was settled in 2018, both years would be retroactive. So while technically, you could argue, they, their contract continued during the term of the negotiations, so they always had a contract, and the terms would then subject to retroactivity based on those terms of the law. So that's why there's two years of retroactivity.
And I, I do have a further question for the administration. It's my understanding through emails that if council doesn't act on this, it becomes, is, is that state law that it becomes?
So, so once it's signed, we have presented to council in a relatively quick fashion, and then council has 30 days on which to act on that legislation. If there's no action in that 30 days, it becomes effective.
And that is by state, that is by state law, Mr. Kousley, yes.
The idea is to prevent administration from presenting it, council never acting on it, and subsequently, then you have a limbo for...
Just from my own knowledge, the, the email said it would pass if we didn't pass it, but it's really action. Not that I'm suggesting council won't pass it, but if council didn't pass it, then it just doesn't pass, correct?
So you have 30 days to act one way or the other. If you, if you don't act, it passes. If you approve it, then it passes. If you reject it, then it's rejected, and then we're back to the drawing board.
That helps my understanding.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Is it 30 days from when it's presented to council, or from when it's signed? And so this was signed on the 27th of April, is this the one?
No, that's, that's...
The ninth, wasn't it?
That's, that's the other one, okay.
I believe this was signed Friday, the...
So we're good on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Paul, what were those percentages again?
2% in 17, 2% in 18, and 2.3% in 19.
Did you guys decide on how many hours of work a week? I know we were working on that, 60 hours of 48.
It's, should be 60. Per month.
That's what we wanted them to do, right?
Yes.
Per month.
It was 48.
Per month.
It was 48, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's an increase.
Any other questions?
So this one, did, this was signed, you said that May 9?
No, I believe I said Friday, which was May 19.
Oh.
May 19.
Hey, there's no date, there's no date on it.
Mr. Towsley, would you?
Yeah, I said May ninth because that's the date on the memorandum that we got. That doesn't necessarily mean that was the date of the signature. It says it was executed unless I'm reading the wrong one. I'm reading the wrong one, I apologize. Either way, I'll, I'll make a motion to move this to next, ordinance sixty-seven, to next week's council meeting with emergency language, and it appears it's necessary to waive readings.
Second that.
Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Mr. Kuriant?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Next item on tonight's agenda, another tentative agreement. Mr. Towsley?
This is an agreement with, is this a part-time patrolmen's?
No, it's full-time, although.
Okay.
All the full-time police officers, OPBA.
And this agreement would be a two percent raise in eighteen, two point four in nineteen, and two point five in two thousand twenty, and we're under the same situation as we were in the last conversation as far as needing to get it passed. Does administration have anything further they want to add to that? No? Anybody on council have anything?
I do, I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, this one's dated April twenty-seventh. That was signed. So how do we get our thirty day, will still have it? How does this go with the, I believe Mr. Kernan was figuring this up and he's thinking that the twenty-ninth, we could actually vote on it?
So it's thirty days and that takes us to the twenty-seventh of May, which is a Sunday, which is not a business.
Then legal holiday.
And then a legal holiday, so those don't count. It goes to the next regular business day, correct? Which puts us at Tuesday.
I think that's right.
Okay.
So we would actually have some input in on it.
Yeah, you have the right to accept or reject it.
Right.
Next week.
Okay.
And I would argue that the twenty-seventh was when they signed it. I'm, I'm looking back to see when we received it. It wasn't on the twenty-seventh. So I would make an argument that we have thirty days from our signature.
Or our receipt.
Or our receipt. So I'm pretty certain we have time.
So twenty-ninth is fine then?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All right, then I'll make a motion to add ordinance sixty-eight to next week's council meeting with emergency language and waiving readings.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Mr. Kuriant?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
All right. That's it for general topics. Moving on to unfinished business, Parks restroom proposal, Park Cemetery resolution. Mr. Gaynor?
Yes. Thank you, Scott. The Park Resol, the Park Cemetery Board did send a resolution forward stating, whereas the Parks and Cemetery Board recommends that Norton City Council use money collected for park improvement from the cable franchise fee to install locked restrooms with sinks in the pavilion of Loyola Park, AKA Oakleaf Park. Included in this proposal is a faucet with a protective covering if located outside the pavilion and a drinking fountain. The board also recommends the installation of a camera inside the pavilion and a protected box to monitor suspicious activity. In addition, the lighting inside the pavilion also needs upgraded and improved. Last, we recommend that at least one additional porta john be added to Loyola Park during the soccer season to accommodate the large attendance, over three hundred people, during soccer games until the said improvements listed above, which include a drilled well and a water source, be completed at the pavilion. Since, I'll go on, since, since this was discussed at Parks and Cemetery and since I drew up this proposal for it, I've got information concerning the well, which is the only water source in that area that's available, and also information concerning my suggestion that they put a tank in the ground and have it pumped periodically for the waste from the, from the toilets. I think if Mr. Markey would explain what I'm talking about, about the well and the,
Sure.
and the tank that I suggested, and that mainly is, is the key to this thing, is the tank and the water well. So if you would, Mr. Markey?
Sure, Mr. Gaynor. The, the issue with drilling a well for drinking fountains is that it would, it would make us a public water source at that point. Once you become a public water source, the Ohio EPA puts a bunch of requirements on for water quality testing. We'd have to treat the water before it could serve through the drinking fountain. We don't have anyone trained to do that. There's some costs associated with that. You either have the contract for it or train someone and get them out there, test and treat that water. Barring the fact, barring getting a water line there at some point, I know we're looking at a water line coming down two sixty-one, but until that time, I don't think a well to serve a drinking fountain really works. The issue with the holding tank for the restrooms is that the EPA will allow holding tanks temporarily, if you have like a festival or if you're doing something, you know, something that's short-term, just like a porta john, they'll allow that. Long-term, they don't allow you to put holding tanks in the ground and have continual use over a long period of time, nor do we think it's appropriate to look at something like a septic system, something like that. I mean, it really needs to be a sewer and solution up there in order to serve bathrooms. So I think, it's not that it's a deal killer, but I think those are two considerations that council has to keep in mind when you're looking at putting bathrooms up at that park.
And in addition to what he just said, I did speak to the, the planning director of Metro Parks today. And I was under the impression that they had water, a well, and a restroom at the Silver Creek Metro Park. They don't. They have, they have a, a concrete holding tank that is not flushable. And I'm told by him, and he seems to know exactly what he's talking about, that the EPA will not approve a holding tank of any kind that has water going into it. Flush toilets, in other words. They will not approve it. And also, he said that Metro Parks are trying to eliminate all of their wells and, as a water source. Every time a water line comes close to them, they attach to it. And he said they spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on that new restroom facility at Silver Creek Park just this past year. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars and it's one male restroom and one female restroom with a tank underneath. But it is in a building and they had to build the building. And he said that it's, it's exactly a porta john enclosed with a building and they have it pumped, just like we have our porta johns pumped. So as far as, as far as even considering putting a tank in, I don't see any way to do that. I don't see any way to, even though there's a lot of people, including myself, that want restrooms in that park at Loyola. I don't see any way to have a flush toilet or, or anything other than a porta john at this time until the water and sewage is, is ran past there. I would suggest, though, that if water and sewage has ran past there anytime in our lifetime, that one of the first things we should do is put in that restroom with water and sewage. So I guess in my mind that the restrooms at, at, at Loyola Park are off the table in my mind. However, as Mr. Markey stated, the EPA requires a lot of testing on a well to be consumed by humans, correct?
That's, that's correct.
But I don't believe, and I may be wrong, this could be looked into, that a well would have to be tested as, as much or maybe not at all if we were to drill a well and at least we would have the water for the fields and any other thing that is not human consumption. I still think there should be a well drilled there just for the sake of the soccer leagues for, for the sake of them using it for whatever they need it for except drinking. And they have shown a willingness to hold fundraisers, to even, one person stated, maybe even pay as much as half of the cost of this. I'm not saying they're going to do that, but, but there's been some suggestion that they might be willing to. So I think if possible, I'd like to see the administration look into the cost of a well to drill it there. An adequate well that would, since we're not talking about restrooms now, one that would take care of the fields.
So you're looking at a well, a pump?
Exactly.
Uh, some type of housing to house it?
Well, that, the, there is housing there now. The pump and everything for the well, the pump and everything for the well, the way I envision it could be if the well is drilled in direct vicinity of the building, it'd just be a matter of installing a pump. The electric's there, the, the, the mayor at one time mentioned that he thought there was a dirt floor in there, but there's not. They're all concrete floors.
Okay, on the one, on the concession side of the?
They're all concrete. But anyway, I, I, just back to the well, I, I'd like to see it looked into to see if there could at least be a well drilled there for a water source, not only for the fields, but in the future if there, everything goes all right with a water line and stuff, that, that could be used for years cheaper than a city water. You know, if, if the electric to run that well to water the fields with could, I'm positive, would be less than the cost of city water to pump and run the fields paying by the gallon. And since we're not any longer considering, or at least in my mind, I don't think we can consider putting restrooms in there, I would like to suggest as their, as their Parks and Recreation Resolution stated to at least put one porta john more in addition to the one that's there now, add to the contract that we have with the porta john company for the remainder of this season and henceforth and forever until we get restrooms in there. Their, their attendance at these soccer games continue to increase every year. They were down to, I don't know, a hundred members or so last year or year before last, and they've already up to around three hundred.
Can the administration go ahead and get cost on adding the porta john and, and all the costs associated with adding a, a well there?
And, and also, the proposal that I wrote to start with was not only for that park, but for others. And the only one that, that I would think would be doable and sensible would be this one at Columbia Woods. And I know the restrooms are not there now. An un, someone who doesn't see the future decided to take them out. And I would like to see them put back in. My, my suggestion is to see them put back in and but there's water there now. And I don't know what, maybe the mayor remembers what was the source of the sewage at that time when they were in there. Is that city sewers?
I don't, I don't, I don't recall.
I, I don't either. I, I've been coming to these meetings for years and I don't remember ever hearing it mentioned that they were closing those restrooms, but they did. And that's, that's then and this is now. Those restrooms, I've watched for the last several weeks now, since I started looking into these restrooms, I've watched those crowds down here and they're almost as large and even bigger on some days than the ones at Loyola Lake, I mean Loyola Park or Oakleaf. So I don't see any reason in the world why we can't have restrooms in that building again and have a camera set up if necessary, if they think it's necessary because of vandalism, have the camera set up at this building to guard against vandalism. And it could, as I suggested before, it could be a camera that is either wired or wireless direct to the dispatch center. I don't believe that would add a lot of work to the dispatchers. If it does, they can tell me. I, I don't know if it would or not to look at that monitor or to look up when it came on and beeped.
I think the only way that you're going to be able to monitor the restrooms is if the baseball associate, say, association is practicing there, then that individual, whoever's in charge of the practice has a key.
That's right.
He opens it up at the beginning, closes it at the end. He's solely responsible for it. To have a camera there tied to dispatch, I mean, every time somebody goes to the restroom, we're not going to send an officer down to inspect afterwards, so I don't.
No, 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 Scott, you're misunderstanding what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
If, if you'll let me go into it and finish it, I'm not suggesting that you have a camera that's running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and everybody that walks by there does it. I'm suggesting that that camera would be turned on when there's no facility, nothing going on in there. Like you said, if a coach for the baseball team unlocks those restroom doors, the camera comes on. If the tennis coach from the high school unlocks those doors, the camera comes on. Whoever unlocks those doors, there could be a switch inside that says boom, camera. And, and the minute that they close those doors, that switch goes back off and then the camera comes on and is, and the camera is observing those fields, those restrooms, when there's nobody there that goes in and out of them, like you said. I don't mean a camera that, like you said, that sees everybody coming and going. I'm saying in those times, like say, what time is that park closed? Nine o'clock at night, right, or something? Dark in the summertime, maybe? Whatever time that park is not open to the public, and there are times, unless we're the only city in the world that don't close their parks, there are times that parks are supposed to be closed to the public. And I believe it's probably in our ordinances, nine o'clock at night. And if it is, that camera should be on and nobody should be there, period. It's just as simple as that. Nobody should be there. I mean, not walking your dog, not, not talking to your neighbors or whatever. If that park is closed, it's closed at dusk.
Can we get a cost of what it would be to get that restroom, restroom up and operational?
Thank you. That's all I have on it.
All right. And next one is the Cemetery Board Resolution for the cemetery. Mr. Gaynor?
This is pretty cut and dried. We, we have an obligation to maintain our cemeteries. And the Parks and Cemetery Board again has, has sent a resolution, as soon as I find it, has sent a resolution to City Council for consideration. As I find it, as I said.
Headstone repairs and tree removal.
Western Star Cemetery, please see attached. That was a vote on the motion was four against, zero abstained, zero approved. On the back of it, it states, whereas the Parks and Cemetery Board recommends that Norton City Council use money collected from the cable franchise fee to replace the fencing which is being done, so you can forget that. That was removed from Western Star Cemetery with comparable fencing, which is happening as to what is located in the front portion of the cemetery. We also strongly recommend that City Council approve one of the submitted quotes from either Summit Memorials or Midwest Everlasting Memorials in order to upgrade and improve the historical headstones located at Western Star Cemetery. Both companies come highly recommended in the Parks and. Both companies come highly recommended, and the Parks and Cemetery Board feel either company would do quality work. This improvement would be done over a period of time as allocated by time and cost. Last, the Board recommends that the leaning tree, located inside the cemetery on the south side, be either repaired or removed, due to damage at the base of said tree, and that the two remaining dead trees located on the south side of the cemetery be removed. And there are two proposal quotes attached to the back of this. One of them is from Summit Memorials, which is the lesser expensive of the two, and which is the one that I would recommend. We've had them do work before, and I know they do good work, and the other company is, I think, a Wadsworth Company, and they also, I'm told, do excellent work, but their proposal, they're doing more for the amount, but they're also doing a lot more detailed work on the tombstones and such. But as far as the two proposals, and cost wise, and what we can afford, I think, if we were to approve the 87.50, which really is not a great deal of money for what they're going to do. I've been through there several times, and looked, there's approximately 70 to 80 tombstones that need repaired, and they're willing to, I believe, start fairly soon, and they could have some of it done, maybe in a week or so, I don't know, have to be contacted and found out. But, the, the fact is, like I said before, we as a city, have the responsibility, a legal responsibility, to maintain these two graveyards, at least, Norton Center and the Western Star. And in my opinion, we have not maintained them. We've depended on volunteers, and they've went in and did an excellent job of trying to maintain them. There's a lot of accolades that could be handed out to the people that worked throughout the years on them. But, still, there's just too much work for volunteers to do, as I've found out after looking at them closer. And I would recommend highly that this be done, not next year, preferably not even thought about postponing it any longer. It should be done yesterday. So, that's all I have on that.
Do you know, Jack, if they looked at any historical committees or organizations to try to see if they would donate to the restoration of these headstones?
I, I don't know that they have, no. I, I don't know of any, any organization that said, we would like to donate to this. Maybe some of the local businesses, if contacted by the proper people, would be willing to donate to it, but even if we were to get $1,000 from eight different companies, that would almost pay the bill, I still think the city should do the work and pay for it, and if we receive these donations, then apply it. I mean, I'm sure that the Cemetery Committee, if they are asked to do that, they'll, they'll research, you know, and look for donations. I just, I just don't see sitting back waiting on a donation to come in, to do the work that needed done last year. And it's still, it's getting worse every year. And not only that cemetery, the minute that that cemetery is done, we should start on the other one. I mean, you can't do them both, because of the money involved. But, but you absolutely can do this one, at that cost, and, and then start hitting prices on doing the other one, the Norton Center one.
If I'm not mistaken, Lisa Merrick campaigned to repair a lot of these headstones.
She did.
I think it was 2012, 11, somewhere right in there? Hasn't been all that long.
I think in '09.
My concern is, is if there's this many more damaged, you know, are we, is this the best solution? Have we looked at what they did in 2009? Was this the same process? Are we throwing good money away from?
I, I don't know exactly what they done. From what Lisa tells me, I've spoke to her three or four times about it, from what she tells me, she was under the impression they were still in good shape. I think since then, I believe, she told me that she had been out there, and that she feels that Norton Center is worse than Western Star. I disagree 100%. I think Norton Center looks not good, but it looks better, I think, than Western Star. And, and the method that they used to repair some of those, I've been doing construction all my life, and truthfully, the method they used to repair them was not real good method. This company, this Summit Memorial, did some of them. They volunteered and did them for nothing.
Right, and that's my concern. They're the one that did the work the first time, in 2000, you said '09?
I'm not saying, Scott, I'm not saying that we should go with Summit Memorial just because of the cost. If, if the council, it would have to be council and the Board of Control, of course, if we went with the other company, because it's many more dollars, and, and if council, in their wisdom, which I would agree with 100%, the, the work that they're willing to do, the company from Wadsworth, would be far superior, in their, in their, in their description of what they'll do, would be far superior to what Summit Memorial says they will do. I mean, they're willing to use certain materials that Summit Memorial is not proposing to use. So if I had plenty of money, and, and I wanted to do those headstones right, I'd go with the company in Wadsworth and do them right. But you're talking, I believe it's $15,000, as opposed to 87.50. So, in our lifetime, I'm hoping, if Summit Memorial comes in, and somebody from the city who hopefully has enough time to occasionally glance in on what they're doing, I'm hoping that they do a good job, and, and they will last until most of us in this room are, are history.
And do you know if they've talked to anybody in the masonry department at the high school, where, I mean, to, to pour new foundations, to reepoxy the broken headstones? I mean, we're not talking, like, rocket science, and?
Well, it is in a way. I mean, it's complicated.
Right, but if, that gives our masonry students real life experience, saves money, and gets the job accomplished.
But when?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know if anybody's talked to them, have they?
I don't either, and, and I'm not saying, that'd be a good idea, send them out there. I, I mean, I'm 100% behind it. I was gonna, I was willing to volunteer to do it, if the city would supply the materials and everything. I personally would have supervised the work, I'm capable of it. Believe me, I'm capable of it. But, but, we've talked about this since February the 9th, I believe, and nothing's been done, not one thing, has been done to fix those cemetery headstones. And I personally am, am, I'm ready to throw up my hands and run away, because I think the headstone should be repaired, starting tomorrow morning.
So, if I'm?
I'm sorry, I was, I know Ms. Mullins is really trying to weigh in on this, if we can give her an opportunity.
You want to come up to the podium?
Denise Mullins, 2886 Wild Banks Drive. Ms. Gibson, the chairman of Parks and Cemetery, had made up a letter soliciting contributions that was to go out recently, and that was going to Kiwanis Lions, Women's Club, Twinsbrook Garden Club, all the different local organizations, to see if they would be willing to contribute. And in addition, from the few times that we've been visiting Western Star specifically, it's clear that a number of the headstones were fixed, those that show signs of having been repaired, are still repaired. So it looks like that's held. The problem is that if they're from the Revolutionary War, and they're made of sandstone, at this part, they're cracking, they're so tilted from the heave of the ground with the various winters and wet conditions, those are the ones that we're looking at. So it's not a redo, it's actually doing things that were never repaired.
All right. Do you know if they contacted the masonry department at the high school?
No, that was not mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kerner?
Thank you. First of all, I'd just say that, as a city, we do have an obligation to maintain the cemeteries, it's our property, it's something that we need to do, I think we all know that. First question is, regardless of which of these proposals we may or may not choose, I, I don't recall that this is something that was budgeted at the beginning of the year. So this would have to come from somewhere. And Mr. Messner, do you have any idea where that would be?
It was not budgeted for in the cemetery fund, but Mr. Gainer has made a point that if council would act, and so designate, they probably could use money from the cable franchise fees.
Okay. Secondly?
Right now, there's about $30,000 through mid-May.
All right. And what do we, that is normally used for parks, correct?
That's correct.
So we would have to authorize it to be used for cemetery, by ordinance? All right. The, the second thing is, is while I think it's always a good idea to look for other less expensive options, like help from the high school students and stuff, this isn't something, this isn't something that I think that we want to turn over to the high school masonry, with, with all due respect. I mean, I'm, I'm sure they're all very talented young people, and, and they're learning, and they're doing great things. This is something that is, I would guess, specialized, as far as how these repairs are made, the epoxy, all of those things, so while I get trying to look into those things, I'm not sure that you'd have a good outcome, or, or lasting outcome. Maybe you would, I don't know, but I'm not sure that you want to take that chance with something that you're talking about, you know, graveyard memorials and things of that nature. So it, it needs to be, in my estimation, needs to be done professionally. So.
I just figured that the, the teacher in charge would be able to make that determination, after he looked at the job, looked to see what was involved, what materials would be needed, and, you know, he may come back and say, no, I, I don't have anybody, or, yeah, you know what, I, I have one or two kids. All I'm saying is, it's, it's an option that we should explore. Any other comments on this, Mr. Gainer?
I, I would just like to see it brought to council, at the next council meeting, in a resolution to accept one of the two bids, and take a vote on repairing the headstones, period.
Well, I mean, I, I would just weigh in and say, it's, it's in the property committee, so if the property committee wants to bring it forward, they can bring it forward.
That's right.
We'll vote on it, so.
Is that your motion, Mr. Gainer?
Yes, it is.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
If, if I just may ask a question, because I would assume that Mr. Markey's going to have to prepare legislation for us to look at, are we looking at one of these particular bids from the property committee? Are we looking at saying, okay, let's do, let's do legislation for some memorials, in the amount not to exceed 87.50? Are we to that point?
I would go the cheaper, because if Lisa said that they did a fine job on the others, it's the other ones that are being looked at, let's stay with the same person again.
And that, wasn't it, didn't they say that they volunteered to do that? We didn't even pay, pay them the last?
The last time, correct.
Well, if their work was good then, it ought to be good now. I don't have a problem with going, with the Summit Memorials. I think it needs to be done. And I agree with Joe, as far as his assessment, I would not want to bring the kids in, not say that they couldn't do it, but I think we'd be better off just paying and having it done, and get, take care of. And as far as the trees, our people can, our service department can handle that, can't it? Removing those three trees, I think it is?
They handled the other trees pretty easily. I would think that they could take care of those three also.
Well, yeah, but some of them are inside.
I don't really know who did it.
Are they close to some of the monuments in there?
There's a chance that if that one tree falls that's inside the cemetery, it'll destroy some of the monuments.
All right, can?
One thing at a time.
Yeah, Mr. Fowler, can you have Larry take a look at that, and see what he thinks? And we do have a motion on the floor. Jack, would you like to revise that, to make that specifically for Summit?
Yes, I would, please.
All right.
And to authorize taking the money out of the franchise?
Yes, exactly.
All right.
Taking the money out of the franchise?
I second, yes.
All right. Motion on second. Good with that, Justin?
I follow you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kurant?
Yes.
All right. Next item, garbage nuisance, draft legislation, Mr. McGloone?
Yes, this is, I think this is some Mr. Towsey brought up with, and I think Mr. Fowler, you were working with him on that? Where we at on that?
I've been working with Mr. Bremen and Pam at the Service Department to identify the, the 10-day rule that they've been using.
Okay.
And so there's been some discussions internally about that, nothing's ready at this time.
Okay, so we'll give you some more time, and then we'll, we'll talk about this at a later time.
What we'll do is, is we're just going to go ahead and shell this, and when administration's ready to move forward with it, just go ahead and present legislation, and we'll go from there.
Table it?
Yeah.
Any new business?
I don't know if it'd be under new business or old business, I'd just like to ask Mr. Fowler if, if he's heard anything more from the engineer from the Highway Department concerning the water problem that's flooding the people clear down to Easton?
I have not heard anything from ODOT.
Or is anyone following up on that? I mean, is there any suggestions made to anyone about how to fix it, or, I know they're still awfully concerned about it.
I will follow up with ODOT, we had talked about it several times, and I don't know that it's going anywhere, unfortunately.
All right, we'll wait to hear back from you on that.
One more thing?
Yes.
Please. The water problem that I'm pretty sure was already decided to take care of on Fairway, across the street from Terry, Mr. Parker's house, is it still on Larry's agenda? Because I noticed, I was up there yesterday, and it was not addressed. Is, is that still something that he's planning on doing? He told me a couple, three weeks ago, that he could not get ahold of the person who owned the home where the pipes were to be removed. I haven't had any trouble getting ahold of him. I, I go up there, and he's almost always in the evening at his home, or he, Terry was going to give Mr. Hess his telephone number, in case he didn't have it, to make arrangements to have this work done. I just wondered if they're still going to do it, or what?
My understanding is, Mr. White has been tasked with sending out a letter several months prior, and Mr. White has failed to respond to the request.
What was he supposed to do?
And until we put the property on, until we put the property owner on notice, through the formal process that we have in place, we're limited in our ability to go onto a property and remove the pipe. So Mr. White and I are going to have the, get the letter out 10 weeks ago conversation.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Topics for work, next work session, we already discussed a few of them. Does anybody have anything else to add to the next work session? We have one public comment, Judith Lynn Lee. If you would give your name and address to the stenographer, and you have five minutes.
Judith Lynn Lee, 3227 Creekside Drive, Norton, Ohio. Judith Lynn Lee, 3227 Creekside Drive, Norton, Ohio. To Mayor Azita and the council of the city of Norton, I come before you with concern about an incident that happened here in the city of Norton. One of our residents was charged with menacing, ethnic intimidation, and criminal trespass after placing a cross with intimidating messages, i.e., we don't want you here, we need, you need to move, bad things will happen to you, and more, on the property of his neighbor, who was African-American. Trash was also thrown on the property of this resident, as well as threatening messages on his door. I stand here as a minority, a civil rights advocate with the NAACP, National Association for the Advancement of Color People, and most importantly, a citizen of Norton. We in the organization work tirelessly to see that our communities will not tolerate such behavior. I'm sure that the city of Norton would join me in this endeavor. I have reached out to this young man regarding this situation, as well as the police department of the city of Norton. I ask that you city council leaders will speak out, speak up, and speak out about this situation as well, and making all citizens who reside here in this community feel welcome, regardless of race, creed, or color. I ask that the city council of that ward reach out to this young man, and as well as the residents of that neighborhood, and let them know that we are a family. I can only hope and pray that we conduct ourselves as though as well. I'm not sure what, I think that would be, either be Ward 1 or Ward 2. If you have not, Mr. Gaynor, I believe that is you, reach out to this young man, and reach out to see what we can do to make him feel that he is safe in his own home. He has a right to live as a citizen, as we all do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You need to give a copy of what you just read to Carrie.
Be no further actions before council. Meeting is adjourned.